We're going to call this regular meeting of Erie County Council to order at 6:17 PM. Please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. This evening, Councilwoman Shouerman is going to lead us in the optional prayer. Councilwoman Shouerman?
In a society that has you counting money, pounds, calories, and steps, be a rebel and count your blessings instead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shouerman. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Rastutter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Shouerman?
Here.
Mr. Schank?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here.
Next, we'll have a hearing from the public. As we always state, if somebody has called in in time to be on the agenda, they receive five minutes. If not, we certainly will give everybody an opportunity to speak, and they would have three minutes. I do want to mention tonight that we did have a special request because we do have some members of the public who are hearing impaired, and we appreciate you being here, and I certainly apologize on behalf of this council and county government because we do not have an interpreter this evening. I do want you to know that the county council staff worked very diligently to attempt to have somebody here tonight, and on the notice that they had, there was just nobody available. So, we recognize your concern. We thank you for being here to bring this concern further to our attention, and we are working on things to certainly resolve that. With that being said, the members of the public who have called in to get five minutes, beginning with Michelle Repman, if you're here, please come to the podium and give us your name and municipality, and I will begin your five minutes then.
I did that so it would be a little easier for you to follow.
Thank you.
And gave you some good reading material. Okay. My name is Michelle Repman. I am in Washington Township in Erie County. I reside in Washington Township. Okay? Good evening, Erie County Councilmen and members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with all of you this evening. I'm here to speak about some of the facts and science behind children and masking and COVID-19, not the political science that it has become. So, the first thing I wanted to talk about is I know you all have taken an oath of office to the Constitution, so I think that's very important when you think about what I'm talking tonight and what you decide to do. The first thing in your packets, council persons, is about child endangerment, and I wanted to talk a little bit about child endangerment. And I gave you the definition of child endangerment, Section 4304, under Title 18 in the Pennsylvania. Okay? Well, "A parent, guardian, or other person supervising the welfare of a child under 18 years of age, or a person that employs or supervises such a person commits an offense if he knowingly endangers the welfare of the child by violating a duty of care, protection, or support. A person commits an offense if the person is in an official capacity, prevents or interferes with the making of a report of suspected child abuse," under 23 PA subsection, Chapter 63. Okay? And I explained a little bit more in your packet if you want to look at it. The next thing I want to discuss is the definition of child abuse as listed in the Pennsylvania Child Protected Services law. And it's a very long explanation. I will let you read it at your time, but the term "child abuse" shall mean intentionally, knowingly, and recklessly doing any of the following. And there's many, there's six different things with many subsections, but what I'm going to do is point out number three, "causing or substantially contributing to serious mental injury to a child through any act or failure to act, or a series of such acts or failures to act." And then subsection five is interfering with the breathing of a child. Okay? I'll let you read the rest of it yourself. I don't think I have enough time to go through everything. So, the reason I'm here today is to talk about the mask mandates on the children. Okay? For one thing, it's a unconstitutional. You are violating both the First and Ninth Amendments by doing this. And as council persons, you have the obligation to correct this for the citizens of Erie County. Okay? Masks are ineffective, and in many ways, they harm. Okay? It's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear, standard cloth and surgical masks offer next to no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols. The size of a virus particle is much too small to be stopped by a surgical mask, cloth, or bandana. A single virion of SARS-CoV-2 is about 60 to 140 nanometers, or .1 microns. Okay? The poor size in a surgical mask is 200 to 1,000 times that size. Consider that the CDC website states, quote, "Surgical masks do not catch all harmful particles in smoke." Okay? And that the size of smoke particles in a wildfire are .5 microns, which is five times the size of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. Okay? There have been hundreds of mask studies related to influenza transmission done over several decades. It's a well-established fact that masks do not stop viruses. Do not. Related to the 1918 to 1990 influenza pandemic, there was almost universal agreement among experts, the deaths were virtually never caused by the influenza virus itself, but directly from severe secondary pneumonia caused by well-known bacterial pneumopathogens that colonized the upper respiratory tract. Dr. Fauci and his National Institute of Health studied pandemics and epidemics and concluded, quote, "The vast majority of influenza deaths resulted from secondary bacterial pneumonia." Additionally, children have been repeatedly shown not to be drivers of the virus. It is well-accepted that children have statistically zero chance, zero chance, of dying from COVID. Zero. If I can make that more clear, I'll use the word zero again. The CDC shows that K through 12 mortality rate from or with COVID-
Ms. Repman?
Yes.
Your five minutes have expired.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Next on our agenda to receive five minutes is Jill Wallace. My understanding is that Jill was unable to make it this evening, but I did want to call her name if she did come in to give her an opportunity to speak. So, Jill Wallace. Okay. Then, next on our agenda to receive five minutes is Lou Aliotta. Please come to the podium and give us your name and municipality, and I'll begin your time then.
Thank you. Lou Aliotta, Mill Creek Township. Good evening, council members, administration, students, parents, voters, taxpayers. And again, let me thank you for your service to our community council members. Do we have a crisis in leadership and governance at all levels of government? I believe so. I ask all elected and appointed public officials, did you forget your sworn oath of office? Do you know the consequences of violating the oath of office? This violation is under Title 18 USC 242, deprivation of rights under the color of law, and for each charge, it's $250,000. You have a fiduciary duty and are in the public trust not to work in concert with or be involved in or with the trespass upon guaranteed and protected rights. This includes misrepresentation of facts and falsification of documents. Did you know, under the present circumstances, Erie County health orders fit the definition of domestic terrorism? This is under 18 USC 2331, to intimidate and coerce a civilian population. Did you know that I requested, under the right-to-know law, statistics from the Department of Health and the open records officer, Attorney Richard Perhak, certain statistics? He did not provide the statistics from the public documents, which was and is used to publish the graphs from the Department of Health. Why the secrecy? Did you know that, as council members? I will now have to appeal Mr. Perhak's response, and that's going to cost taxpayer money because it has to be appealed to a common pleas court. Why are these public records not available? There was an article in the Erie Times News, 9/24, the reports of four deaths of COVID since Monday, 9/20. If they reported it, why can't the public receive the data sheets minus the names of the individuals? This is part of the right-to-know law, but that's very strange. Are there any children under 18 years of age dying from COVID-19 in Erie County? We must ask that question. 2,300 years ago, a people discovered that forcing individuals to cover their nose and mouth broke their will and individuality and depersonalized them. It made them submissive. That's why they imposed on every woman the mandatory use of fabric over their face. It was repeated in a different manner in Germany in the 1940s. Every female head was shaved. Can you remember that as a fact in your world history class in high school? Modern psychology explains it. Without a face, we don't exist as independent beings. When a child looks in a mirror between the ages of two and five, he or she, they discover as an independent being. The mask is the beginning of the deletion and deleting that individuality. He who does not know his or her history is condemned to repeat it. And here's another quote, "Without freedom of thought, there can be no such thing as wisdom and no such thing as public liberty without freedom of speech." That's from one of the founding fathers, Benjamin Franklin. By the way, I believe Melissa Lyon, and you remember that headline in the Erie Times News? I believe that she has no authority to remove religious exemption. And who spoke to her, or County Executive Kathy Dahlkemper, and stated, "Ms. Lyon received unsolicited feedback from school leadership"? Who are these individuals from school leadership? Each and every public official, it's each one of us, right here, you, cannot and will not usurp-
Mr. Aliotta.
-the rights of our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Your five minutes has expired.
Thank you. I reserve my right to place my comments in writing, and I will submit them to council. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Before I call up the next individual, I did want to say that a friend had informed me that using the word "hearing impaired" is an offensive term, and that just saying "deaf" is the more appropriate term that you preferred to have us use, and so I apologize for that. And we'll call the next speaker on our list, who is Brent Davis. You will receive three minutes, and please give us your name and municipality, and we will begin then.
Thanks, Chairman. I'm just going to yield a little time here to this lady just due to convenience of what they've got going on. It'll make sense in a minute. Brent Davis, Mill Creek Township. prove this point, that I was unaware, even before reaching out to these folks, that there's a lot of county services and things, and we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's clearly a demographic where a lot of these folks try to come and pay their taxes or use county services remotely, even through the county, and there's absolutely no way for them to coordinate to have someone there. So, I mean, it's just upon, you know, it's my recommendation that council looks into maybe some kind of remote iPad translation that can be on demand. And I invited them to actually speak and tell you their stories. We made it so we could have a translator here this evening, so that way you can kind of hear the stories that I heard, and I think it's just better that way. So, I appreciate you taking the time and considering that. So, I want to see if someone else wants to come on. Any more next? So, we're going to get her to translate so you can understand, like, oh, no, no, you can talk, like, if you want to translate, yeah. Yeah, the mic's on.
My name is Marcia Tyers.
Hey, you probably want to take the mask.
What?
Because you can't hear.
Okay. You hear me now? Oh, I just may have help. Now, you see my face? Hi, my name is Marcia Tyers, and this is a turp. It's issue with the problem, and we have a hard time finding a turp, so we want to improve the deaf service to get a turp, but we have a hard time finding because it's short, if it's a turp. So, how we get more interpreters? We have an interpreter for the deaf client, and the mask is hard. It's hard to listen, people talking, and you can't have an interpreter all the time with us. So, please, thanks for having me, need more interpreters. Thank you. And I want to thank the friend who came to the deaf club, wonderful, he's a wonderful guy. Thank you.
Did you all get that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Wendy Cabrera. Is Wendy here, and would she like to speak?
I guess we're going to phone it in.
Hello, my name is Wendy. I don't know how to pronounce my name.
Cabrera.
Beginning to decide. Talked to Erie County about interpreter working, why we all here know what's going on. Like, we're here, we guys are talking, there's no interpreter, no repertoire for the organization. Kelly, you help me.
Okay. Getting interpreter to care later, and trying to get her job, get her job, and deaf observer and non-interpreter, and be frustrated and trying to get a job in the post office for 38 years. Too tired and aggressive to be working today. They can't grow today, but in past, in 1950 to 1960, no change. The thing to see is nothing, nothing, nothing in your heart. You're trying to encourage interpreter, helping, helping improve an interpreter, and no one wants to move car for interpreter service. Now, we have a problem. Okay, thank you for listening. Now, me, I'm down. Okay.
Kelly Scott, okay, please give us your full, Kelly. Your full name and municipality, and I'll begin your time.
My name is Kelly Scott. I'm original from Ohio. I just moved here, Erie. Okay. From my scene all these years, why I have related to what's already been two and a half of years, and I know that the people trying to get a server from a county department, like a way, the housing project, or renaming, anything related to county, they have no interpreter. These people need to have a better communication combination. It's like you guys, you can hear and can communicate easy, but we, the deaf, we can't. Now, we want to show you to understand what our needs. But I might be trying to scare you, but we feel that basically like that this county is a violation of American citizenship title too. So, I'm hoping, and we are hoping, that you can find a way to improve in our communication needs. It's not just anything for this county, for the best of counties. Now, I know that Mr. Chang, you have to share, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. I know that you take a handgun. No, 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 no. No, no, no. Now, suppose we are talking to the deaf people, that how you can communicate, that your department training for interpreting or sign language? I don't know. That's a question. Suppose you win, and you win, maybe we can work together, we can do better for this county. But remember, we are more than only deaf people living in this county. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Susan Beamer. Hello.
My name is Susan Bender. I was born and raised in New York City. I moved to Erie County since 1999, since my husband, Cliff, had been born and raised here. Since I moved here, and I have noticed, the deaf culture, the deaf community always rely on ASL, American Sign Language, as the method of communication. You guys are hearing, you be able to hear the phone, able to hear the conversation or whispering, but we can't. You know, now how the frustration is between the hearing communities and the deaf communities. I was hoping it would be a big change, a major change for this Erie County, but the only thing is that the Erie County only have like 500 to 900 deaf people at heart of hearing, living here in Erie County. So, I'm hoping the interpreting service would be available, like what Kelly said about the ADA lawn. I have noticed some of the people already broke the law too. So, it's time for a change, everybody have to follow ADA lawn, but for the interpreting services, it's the best way for deaf community to be able to communicate with the hearing. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Please give us your full name and municipality, and I'll begin your time then.
This is Freda Tepfer from Erie, Pennsylvania, and until Thursday, I'll be a member of the Human Relations Commission Advisory Board. I have not requested to have my appointment renewed. I'm concerned about some of what I see in the proposal to amend the ordinance and the bylaws of the Human Relations Commission. The most egregious thing is in the part that talks about incarcerated people, and they're proposing to change the look-back time from five years to 10 years over employment and housing. I think that's egregious. That's number one, that should be removed. It looks to me like there's a huge amount of power being taken from the commission and being placed in the hands of the director, who also has been, his authority has been just between him and the county council. There's no oversight anymore by the commission as it is currently set up. It would give the director a lot of discretion to decide whether complaints should go forward, and in the provisions for accountability, there's accountability to the council, but it doesn't, there's nothing that says that they have to report on how many cases were not deemed eligible to be pursued further, how many, just how many time restrictions were extended on the discretion of the director and things like that. I just think there's an overwhelming amount of authority being placed in the director, and I think that's, you should take a very hard look at whether that's appropriate. The language in the ordinance and the bylaws should be changed to reflect current language, current people-first language. The term handicap is offensive and it's obsolete, and it should be struck down. There's about four or five places where it's used. The advisory committee, if they have the research authority, then maybe they should be researching the time constraints. How many cases were deemed rejected or deemed not credible by the director, and how many were settled and not? Also, it's important that the regulations that, under public accommodation, it's important for the commission and the council and the director to understand, and for there to be public information to this effect, that public accommodation does include sidewalk access, and it does include website accessibility. And this is both for businesses as well as for state and local governments.
Ms. Tepfer, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will move on. Seeing none, we will move on with the council meeting. Normally, we do not make comments after the public has made their presentations, but I do want to take the opportunity as the chairman of council to make a couple of comments this evening. And that is, I want to thank the people from the deaf community and the people who encouraged you to come tonight. It was a very sobering for myself, and I believe all of my colleagues and the staff of council. You know, we chose a new voting system two years ago, and one of the reasons that we chose the system that we chose is because it had the capability to do all of the things that frankly, we lack here tonight. And we're very proud of the system that we put into place and all of the research that was done to find that system. However, we're not even able to communicate with you when you come in and need to express to us issues that are important to you and our community. We've learned a valuable lesson. And I will tell you that this council has been very proactive on many fronts. The administration has put forward a diversity officer last year, and this council, although supportive, wanted to see more come out of than just a diversity officer. And worked with the county executive for several months to come down with a department of diversity, not just a single diversity officer. And some of the things that we suggested, which we are hoping that we will be dealing with in this upcoming budget, were to have interpreters throughout the courthouse and the courts for not only those that speak several different languages that we now have throughout Erie County, but those from the deaf community and others that need these types of services. We know that this is a growing need in Erie County, and it's not being served. We are hoping through the diversity department, which is a department that is to be created as diversity, inclusion, and equity. And in fact, we're going to vote in such members to a commission tonight. So we hope, even though we're late in doing these things, that we are moving forward in making sure that they happen. But again, that's no excuse for all of you this evening who have come here and expressed to us the needs that you have and the lack of your ability to be able to achieve those services. So thank you for that. Keep our feet to the fire. Keep all the county elected officials' feet to the fire, and let's move forward to solve these particular items. And I would say that if there are members of your group that are willing to be interpreters at public meetings or in the court, it does pay pretty good. It says here $60 per hour is a minimum. So that is something that I think we would be interested in knowing about as we had a lack of any list to be able to call, go to, to provide those services. So thank you for that, and thank you for the courage that you showed in the sobering fact that you have brought to us as members of council. With that said, let's move forward with the meeting, and I would make, accept a motion for an acceptance of the regular meeting minutes for September 14. Councilman Horton?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On approval of the minutes, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda are reports from county officials. Ms. Knight, does the county executive or her designee have any report this evening? Thank you for that. Next on our agenda is a report from the Finance Committee. Finance Chairwoman Clear, if you could give us your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, April 23, 2021, and the committee is submitting under old business items A, B, and C, and under new business A through G. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. I said April instead of September. We did not have a meeting four months ago. I would like to amend that to say we met on Thursday, September 23. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Finance Chairwoman Clear. Personnel Chairwoman Mary Rennie, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Personnel Committee also met on Thursday, September 23. There are no items for tonight's agenda from the Personnel Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Personnel Chairwoman Rennie. Next on our agenda, we have a report from the Rail Committee, which is a committee that has been put together as a committee of council. Mr. Rastetter, you had mentioned in caucus that your committee was not ready to give a report this evening and that you would be ready on October 13. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Rastetter.
My deepest apologies.
Thank you for your continued and diligent work and the members of your committee. Are there any other members of council that wish to give a report this evening? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the old business of council. Mr. Smith, may we have a reading in title only of a second reading of Ordinance 74?
The second reading of Ordinance Number 74, 2021, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, revised expenditure of $3.5 million to the Erie County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Just so the public is aware, under this particular ordinance, we also have a companion ordinance later in the meeting agenda where we will be seating a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission and the members of that board. This is a historic moment, we believe, in Erie County, and we're proud to move this forward, and we're moving these two ordinances together and as parallel ordinances, which is why we have held this particular ordinance up until tonight's vote. Mr. Smith, with that said, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance Number 74, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda, we have the possible sale of a parcel from the repository. I would accept a motion to remove this from the table.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item B from the table.
Thank you. The motion was made by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton, to remove this item from the table. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on that item, please?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie? Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a reading of the possible sale of this parcel from the repository, if you could give the address, please?
This is identified as index number 18-052-036.0-112.00, Genesee Avenue, Lot 285.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions on this particular item? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is the possible sale of a parcel in the repository, and I would accept a motion to remove this from the table.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to remove from the table this item?
To remove the Fargo Street Lot from the table, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
We now have the possible sale of the parcel from the repository. Mr. Smith, if you could read the address, please?
This is Erie County Index Number 1H-052-034.0-216.00. It's a Fargo Street Lot Number 321.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council on this particular item? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the sale of this parcel, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
We will now move to the new business portion of our meeting this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make a motion to move items A and B to second reads, as well as striking letter D, which is item 83 from the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion to amend the agenda by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from the council on amending the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the motion, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
For those of you that may not have been at meetings before, the normal procedure of council is to, when we have an ordinance, to have two, one reading and then a vote. So it comes before the public twice. From time to time, council will amend the agenda to have the reading and the vote on the same night as we did with these particular items, and a resolution then just has one reading and a vote that same night, just one, one reading. So we have amended our agenda, and we will now move forward with the agenda as amended. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of Ordinance Number 80 in its entirety, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 80, 2021, Appointment of Members to the Erie County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. Whereas on September 14, 2021 pursuant to Ordinance 72, 2021, Erie County Council created and established the Erie County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. And whereas pursuant to Ordinance 72, 2021, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission shall consist of nine members, two of whom shall be appointed by the county executive, and seven of whom shall be appointed by county council. And whereas each member of county council shall have one appointment, which appointment may reside outside the district to which the member of county council was elected. Now therefore pursuant to the Erie County Home Rule Charter, the Administrative Code, and Ordinance 72, 2021, the district of each member of county council and the name of each member's appointment to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission are as follows.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to nominate for District One, Darrell Thorpe.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton, for the District One appointee as Darrell Thorpe. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
I would just-
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing me. I just would like to let everyone know that Darrell Thorpe has 20 years' experience in working with diversity, equity, and inclusion in many different states throughout the United States. We are very lucky to have such a member of this community that just happens to live in Mill Creek. So I am very pleased and honored to nominate Darrell Thorpe, where he will be able to bring this experience and to this community. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the appointment of Mr. Thorpe, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next, the, I'm gonna, yeah, Mr. Horton, could you hold one, one second? I'm gonna go out of, out of our normal course of business. Hopefully, I won't regret this, but there seems to be a question in the audience about the procedure of the agenda as I've described it moving forward, so please, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. In parliamentary procedure, do you open up for, in a public meeting, do you open up for comments from the public on that particular topic before the roll call? And that's parliamentary procedure?
No. At a council meeting, the time to speak on any item is during the citizens to be heard, at which time you can speak on any item on the agenda or anything you choose.
If the public is not aware of the issues on the topics, what issues that is presented, then in parliamentary procedure, it is quite of the Sunshine Act?
I object to this out of order discussion.
I will just finally say that all of this stuff is sent out to the media, it's published on our website, and it's all made public. We have committee meetings, finance meetings, et cetera, and so there's plenty of ample time in the Sunshine laws being followed to be able to address each issue. But thank you- But thank you. Continuing with our meeting, we have the District 2 nominee. Councilman Horton?
Sure, Mr. Chair. It gives me great honor and great pleasure to present my nominee. She's a local business owner. In fact, she owns several businesses. Former AAACP. New president, new advisor, vice president, and president. She's earned quite a few years of diversity training here at Erie County's other entities. And I'm pleased to present this evening, Ms. Tiffany LeVette, as the appointee to the nominee of the DEI commission.
Thank you for that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote? And if I could just remind council with the members that we have in the audience this evening when you speak, if you could please remember to pull your masks down. And everybody has agreed that is acceptable practice tonight. So thank you for that. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the appointment of Ms. LeVette, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Next on our agenda is the appointee for District 3, Gwendolyn White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to nominate Gwendolyn White for serving on the board for racial equity and diversity. And if I could just say a few words about her.
Yeah, Mary, Mary, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
So we have a council member on the phone who has nominated their appointee this evening, who is Gwendolyn White. She's made that motion. I would ask for a second to that, and then-
Second.
She is going to make comments. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Rennie, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. And Councilwoman Rennie, you have further comment, and please go ahead. And I may, I'm just gonna try and keep the audience that's with us apprised of your comments.
Thank you. I will try to keep it brief in that case. Gwendolyn White is an underwriting manager for Erie Insurance, and she's been employed there for 36 years. Presently, she's a fellow for CEO Action with Race, for Racial Equity for Erie Insurance. She has served on many different boards and advisory groups, including the United Way, American Cancer Society, Mercy Center for Women, and so on. She has received many awards in the community. She's worked with many different organizations. She is long recognized as someone who contributes to the welfare of others and the well-being of others. One award she received included Pennsylvania's Best 50 Women in Business Award. I just wanted to make mention of that, in addition to others as well. And I'm very pleased to be able to bring her name forward this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rennie has put forth, as I've said, the name of Gwendolyn White, and she is very honored to put forth her name. Gwendolyn White is an awesome person and a very engaged and active member of our community, who has been working at Erie Insurance and is now an underwriting manager for the last 36 years, and has been involved in numerous organizations and boards throughout this community. And Councilwoman Rennie, I commend you on your appointment. I too believe Gwendolyn White is an awesome person. With that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the appointment of Ms. White for District 3, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Next on our agenda, we have the appointment of the District 4 representative.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
On behalf of you, the District 4 representative, I nominate David Gonzalez. I move to nominate.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any questions or comments for members of council? I would like to make a few. I've known David Gonzalez well over 20 years. There's no question that he has been an active member and vocal member of this community where he sees unequal treatment and lack of diversity and lack of civility and lack of inclusion. He has no fear to step forward and bring that to the public's attention. He served with distinction on Erie City Council and served with honor at the Erie Community Foundation and is now the Executive Director of the St. Martin Center, where every day he fights for people in our community that look to him to be a leader and to make sure that he seeks out ways to provide the services that their clients need. So I am honored to put forth the name of David Gonzalez for my appointee to this historic commission tonight. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
On the appointment of Mr. Gonzalez to District 4, Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Next, we have the appointment from the District 5 representative.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to nominate Denise Peppenicki.
Thank you for that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilman Shank, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any comments or questions on this particular appointment? Mr. Shank?
I'd like to say just a few words, I'll keep it brief. Denise is someone I consider a friend, and we have known each other quite a long time. She is an attorney, and she did the private practice, tried the corporate lawyer thing and didn't like it because she likes people. So she gave up her big corporate lawyer job just to go back into private practice to help people. Now, I could sit up here and say wonderful things about her, but this is the text message she actually sent to me. I asked her, after we swapped resumes and stuff, I said, "Would you want to be on the board?" "I would actually, I'm involved in the diversity and equity and inclusion for the Bar Association, and this is one of those areas I am passionate about. Thank you for considering me." So these aren't my words, this is from my nominee to everybody. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the appointment to District 5, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Next, we have the representative for District 6.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Rastetter?
I am honored to present the name of Mr. Matthew Harris, Sr., for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Rastetter, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions? Mr. Rastetter?
Just that Mr. Harris is President of the All About Character Incorporated and the Character Be About It program. I don't know how many people have heard of that around here, but they're pretty big all over the country. It's a very good program, and I'm honored to present his name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rastetter. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the appointment of Mr. Harris to District 6, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Next, we have the District 7 nominee.
Mr. Chairman, it is my honor to nominate Dr. Sarah Carter to the Commission of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any members that wish to make further comments? Councilwoman Shauerman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Sarah Carter, by profession, is a trauma surgeon, but she has spent a lot of her career focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And she serves on many panels and discussions, not only in the Erie area, but also statewide. And she encourages people to, and challenges them, to interrupt their passive complicity, to lead by example, and to use their privilege and position to put an end to racism. In her words, she is calling people to action, and the time is now. And it was, I had very, a lot of talented people to talk to, but when I heard her lecture, I knew she was the right person for the position. And when she called people to action, I decided I would call her and call her to action. And she very graciously accepted, and I'm proud to nominate her. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Shauerman. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the appointment of Dr. Carter to District 7, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. The county executive has two appointees to the commission, and we will now have the county executive's first appointee, which is in nomination.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
On behalf of the county executive, I would like to nominate Mr. Gerald Blanks.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or further questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, since the county executive is not with us this evening, I am just gonna make a few minutes, take a few minutes to mention Gerald Blanks, who I've known for well over, well, many years, actually several decades now. So we try and forget about those ages. But Jerry Blanks has been an advocate for people in the black community and those that have been underserved most of his, if not his entire, adult career. He has been a transformative figure in this community with the youth, particularly in the area of basketball. He's served as a coach and referee for various youth organizations throughout Erie County. And he is just a super guy who has unlimited talents and energies and brings those with him in any endeavor that he is involved in on a daily basis. So I congratulate the county executive for placing her nominee this evening with Gerald Blanks. And Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the county executive appointment of Mr. Blanks, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton? Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Next, we have the county executive's second appointee, or their nominee this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
On behalf of the county executive, I would like to nominate Dr. Adrian Dixon to the DEI Board. Commission.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any members of council that wish to make any further comments or have any questions? Seeing none, I will just make mention of Dr. Dixon, who has been a longtime educator and leader in this community. She has taken on, straight on, the issues of racial divide and the fact of lack of inclusion in this community. She has been a leader, not only in her professional life, but in her personal life. And she now serves, I believe the title is, as President of Sarah Reed. And I commend the county executive once again for her second appointee, who is Dr. Dixon, which I know Dr. Dixon will make an exemplary contribution to this particular commission. Mr. Smith, with that said, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On the county executive appointment of Dr. Dixon, Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Smith. We went through that so diligently, I forgot whether or not we have already motioned for this particular ordinance or whether I should ask for a motion now that the names have been added to the ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Horton?
Yeah, I knew that the names that were put forward are directed to this new DEI ordinance.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Just one clarifying point. This vote then will be on the ordinance, including the names. It'll be a single vote, passing the ordinance.
Yes. Thank you. Before we take that vote, I just want to take a moment to congratulate all of my colleagues, the county executive, her administration, and all the people of Erie County. What we're doing here tonight, and we've said this several times before, is we are moving this community forward with a vision. But more importantly, we're moving it forward with unity. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are just three separate words, unless we put them together and bring them together with unity. By the passage of this ordinance tonight and the addition of these citizens of Erie County to serve on this particular commission, we are doing just that. I'm very proud of- I'm very proud of the colleagues that I serve with on this council and very proud of the work that we do and will continue to do. We don't always get it right, but when we do, we usually do a pretty good job at getting it right. We've all gone through difficult times in the last year and a half, but that's just a drop in the bucket, the difficult times that many people in our country have gone through for decades, generations, and centuries. As we move this commission forward, we are saying that we're ready to move forward as a community to end what has happened in the past and look to the future and look together, united as one people, in this melting pot of America. With that, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a second reading of Ordinance Number 81, in title only, please?
A second reading of Ordinance Number 81, 2021, 30th, 2021 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $15,000 for Hammid Foundation grant in the District Attorney Office.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Ordinance 81, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a first reading of Ordinance Number 82, in title only?
A first reading of Ordinance Number 82, 2021, amending Ordinance 45, 2018, to revise the Erie County Human Relations Commission ordinance.
So moved.
Oh, wait.
Second.
I rescind. The first.
You're right.
You're right.
We always have to have a little humor in our meetings to keep all of us on our toes. So when we do a first reading, we don't do a motion or a second. We only do that when we vote. So we will continue on with the new business of the council. We have amended the agenda to strike out Ordinance Number 83. So next will be Resolution Number 38. Mr. Smith, if we could have that in title only?
Resolution Number 38, 2021, approving an agreement.
No.
Resolution Number 38, 2021, approving an agreement between the Erie County Department of Health and 13 Erie County School Districts to support enhanced pandemic coordination, mitigation, and education.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to, upon the counsel of our solicitor, I would like to make a motion to amend the work statement in this resolution. And it would say, in the subcontractor A section, right after the Erie County Department of Health, we are going to add the wording, subcontractor shall appoint its lead committee health worker not later than October 10, 2021, and notify the Erie County Health Department of Health of its appointment by October 15, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that motion. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any further comments or questions on the amendment? Mr. Smith, may we have a motion or a vote on the motion to amend?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a vote on Resolution 38 as amended?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is the possible sale of a parcel from the repository. Mr. Smith, if you could give us the index number and the address, please?
Item F on our agenda is index number 21-054-092.2-001.78. The address, 6621 West Ridge Road, Lot 14.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On item F, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, we next have a possible sale of the parcel from the repository. If you could please read the index number and the address for us, please?
Item G concerns index number 18-051.001.0-121.00 at 1209 East 21st Street.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any comments or questions on this item from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On item G, Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting tonight. I want to thank all the members of the public for being here and your patience with us throughout the meeting. I would note to everyone here that our next Finance and Personnel Committee meeting is Thursday, October 7, in Room 114 here at the Erie County Courthouse at 4:00 p.m. And it's also available via Zoom. And the next regularly scheduled meeting of Erie County Council is Tuesday, October 12, at 6:00 p.m. here in Room 117 of the courthouse. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We're adjourned.[1788.63]